The meeting, this is a continuation of the working group from the zoning board of appeals. And we're discussing basically Crescent Street primarily on materials and colors and details. So Amy, you want to read the notes?
I do.
It is November 10th, 2021, 5 o'clock.
Okay. Consistent with the government orders extending certain provisions of open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to this meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click from the following link. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial in for 13017158592. Meeting ID 84169826932, passcode 465152. Please use dial in or a computer and not phone. Those audio feedback will assist the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. We provide reasonable accommodations and our language assistance free of charge upon request. If you are a person with a disability and require information on materials in an alternate format, or if you require any other accommodations, please contact the sound disability coordinator, William Manal Town Engineer at 781246638. Inspired advance of the event as possible, every effort will be made to grant your request. Advanced notifications will enable the town to make reasonable make the reasonable arrangements to remove an accessibility barrier for you. Item one, health order. Item two, 21-37 Crescent Street comments open LLC 414648 Crescent Street. Zoning Board Subcommittee will meet to discuss architecture and support conditions. Slide 3.
All right.
But speaking of what it said in there, did you turn me on? The closed caption on?
Speak up a little bit.
Did you turn the closed caption on?
Yes.
Okay, I just don't see it on mine, so I didn't know.
I can see it.
Okay.
You would, you can get in your car and see if you can see it. All right, so I assume we're ready, Brian. To move forward here.
Yeah, we are. So since the last meeting, Peter Sandors and Steve DeFuria from Phoenix Architects have been working really hard to kind of, kind of put the plans together in a more finished form now that we have a clear direction from the zoning board that this is, this is the plan that we're going to move forward with. To make sure everything ties in and works structurally, et cetera. And Peter has updated that that we'd like to present to the board. And then I think Jim, you might, I think you mentioned that you might want to see some cross sections or details. So we want to, we're going to want to find out what you want to see so we can provide you that.
Yeah, I, I do. And, and I, you know, so let's just go through this and then
Yeah.
At the end of it, maybe what I'll do is, is talk Peter through this or either that mark up an elevation or two with little hash marks basically as to where I want to see details.
Yeah, I know you want to see details. We want to provide those. And then Peter also wants to start talking a little, little bit about colors.
Yep.
Some ideas that he thinks will historically fit in that area.
Yep.
So we want to present those guys and kind of get your opinion on that. Then I want to talk to you about, you know, how we might, you know, whether you want me, I would assume I should maybe start putting together some, some conditions for the board to consider. I've kept the list. You know, that I think you're going to want pursuant to discussions with the board. So we can kind of start tracking that in a, in a format to make sure we don't miss anything for the, for the decision.
That would be good.
Yeah. So with that said, I'm going to hand it over to Peter if I can, Jim, and let him kind of, and Steve, and let them kind of take it from here.
All right, you're my co-host, Peter.
Okay, so I'm going to begin. Will you allow me to share the screen now? Let me know when you can, can you see my screen?
I can see you.
Now. Start again. Put you away here. Steve is going to make us share the screen.
Yeah.
Do you? Do full screen? Should be able to see your screen, right? Andrew, by the way.
How's it going?
And Andrew also worked this week on Crescent Commons.
Peter, why don't you tell, tell the subcommittee how much time you guys have put into this?
So we, we, we put in about 45, 50 hours on this. And as we were getting closer, it struck me that we hadn't worked over the past months kind of putting this building together almost piecemeal. When we were taking parts of the second floor, bring them to the third, parts of the third floor, bring them to the fourth. And as you guys were starting to say to me, you know, we're getting to the point where we hopefully will approve this building. I, I thought it was the time to step back and start over. So what we did is we went all the way down into the lower garage. We got our footprint. We preserved the parking. We went to the second level. We preserved the parking. We got our stairwells to begin working all the way up. And then we, we, we drew each floor plate, first, second, third, fourth. In plan, we made all the units work now. Bedrooms have closets, washer, dryers, kitchens, all those little idiosyncrasies that were missing if we look back at the other plan. And something you and I, Jim, have known was going on, you know, sewing windows in the elevation where there was really a balcony or a balcony where there wasn't one. We've, we've stopped that. So now the elevations agree. It's not letting me share.
No, it's weird.
The elevations. Steve, you're listening. Can you share? Maybe Jim can let Steve share. Would that work?
Yeah, I'm here, actually.
For some reason, it's going to like Dropbox or something to share.
Jim, can you make Steve, Peter, can you give up your co-host or make Steve, who can make Steve DeFuria the co-host?
Steve's the, Steve's the co-host right now.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Peter. Jim, as part of this, and we're trying to be up hopefully soon, as part of this redraw of the building, we then started to look at how the roof intersected the building, how the overhang and the swoop of the roof reacted to the dormers. Where, where these things fell in, in sectional plane, even though we don't have the section, we do behind the scene, right? Something you're going to ask me for. So, so these drawings, we look at them now are going to reflect a much tighter roof line and a much tighter floor plan. Are you seeing, can you guys see it now?
Yeah, I was going to boil it up a little bit, Steve, if you could just.
Zoom in a little.
Good. Yeah.
So we, we've taken the time to, again, make sure that these stairwells work, rise, run, that we have enough distance there. So when we get to construction drawings, I'm not going to be faced with needing to make them larger. Did the same thing if you scroll up a bit, Steve, where the lobby is, making sure the, the, yes, right there, the elevator and the lobby entrance are all working the way we really believe they're going to. And then carrying this vertically. So if you go to the next floor, Steve, you guys can see that we now have the stairways coming up into the hallways, the hallways entering the units. Units, as I said, now have washer, dryer, bathrooms, closets in the bedrooms, balconies in the units that are going to have balconies. And the windows now shown in plan are agreeing with the elevations. This is the main, I guess, to call it the second floor. Steve, if you scroll to the third floor, these two floors do repeat each other. It's unique because this building, almost every unit, as you go through is different. So that, so if you're in the far left, that unit's very different than the unit on the far right, and the units in the middle do not repeat. So it's not a standard building where we're, where the box is repeating as it stacks. And then if you go to the next floor, Steve, so here's the fourth floor, again, making sure that the walls on the far right and the far left are lining with walls below, making sure these stairways are coming up. Making sure the roof systems that we're accessing there, we can actually get to. And now if you scroll, Steve, to the elevation, it would, yeah. So if you scoot, there you go. So now we're looking at the front elevation, how where their dormers are coming in, how they intersect with the mansard, sometimes higher, sometimes lower, preserving the curve in that mansard, adding brackets into the building for detail. And we picked a very Victorian bracket that we felt went with the building, making sure that where we called out overhangs in the floor plan, these overhangs carry through. So it's, again, it's the building we had before, but it's more developed than the building we had before.
And so you're showing the, you're showing the step for the landscaping as well.
Showing the step to the landscaping as well, yes. Talk, we, we, we took the band of the front porch and we carried it around the front there, kind of breaking that lower level from the upper levels and still getting the stepping. This, you'll see the front, we started to incorporate some kind of signage off to the right of the lobby saying Crescent Commons. Didn't take it too far yet, but having something there to follow up the building. Worked on, if you scroll up a little bit, Steve, that's the Crescent Hill elevation. Here's the Crescent Hill elevation, working on getting the little eyebrow roof systems over the entry doors. Again, where balconies sit, they sit, trying to show the hierarchy of the planes that are in front of us and then the planes that are pushing back away from us.
What's that piece that's in the, the mansard on the far left that's on the third floor?
We did a, we did a balcony in that one. That's in, right there.
Yeah.
We did a balcony up in there on that one and set it into the mansard. I think that's the only time that happens on the building. They happen once on the back.
It's going to be tough because I think the water is going to run down the face of that and then drop right into that balcony area.
Yeah. Yeah. And if we, we could abandon that if you feel it will be, if you feel, or I feel it's too, too hard to waterproof. Steve, just scroll to the next elevation. Here is the, the right in the rear. Again, no, I, I think, no, that's, there is one more. Just scroll up a little bit, Steve. See in there, in this elevation, which is the right elevation, there's one more balcony set in the mansard. That's two, I'm sorry. So we could look at that if we feel that might be an issue.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it, you got two there actually, one to right and one left.
One left, yeah. Yeah.
I think, I think when you do a cross section, you'll, I, I think you've got, I don't know how you resolve it to make it worthwhile, quite frankly.
Yeah. I mean, as I look at it, it almost looks like you could cut the mansard away, but maybe, maybe we don't want to do that.
Maybe better off with windows than you are with a balcony.
Yeah. And sometimes we have the windows set in a little bit. You'll see where there's no way dormer. Other times on the upper level, the fourth floor, we have aid dormers because of the way they intersect into the, into the mansard. We go to the next slide. So here, here we're trying to color scheme with some very, we're using a very dark gray on the lower level. These are Hardy plank colors. And then we're using a very deep green with a dark tan color, again, to highlight those main sections of the building that are coming forward, right and left, and also the central part of the building that marks the lobby. We tried it with this color scheme and then Steve scrolls up again. Here we tried it with, again, still the deep gray in the bottom, but using variations of a very dark blue and a lighter gray, gray blue as it sets back in.
Can you go back? Can you go back? Go back to the previous one?
Sure.
All right. So there is a distinction between the third and, let's see, the second and third floor. There is a distinction in color across the, it's more subtle.
More subtle, yeah.
Okay.
Really, really trying to get that lower base with that band to inset. And I thought, looking at this color scheme especially, it starts to even add to that great balance. It's going down the hill, which was one thing we had set out to do right in the beginning. Now, now the, those pieces, the far right and the far left are the same proportion with each other. That, that wasn't the case before. So this subtleties like that where, where dimensionally we made them the same because we were able to. Trying to get it more symmetrical and cohesive.
Peter, go to the other color.
Steve, scroll down.
It's, it's because it breaks it up into like little houses, basically, is what happened. So by the light and the dark gray, white gray, basically, it's almost a series of buildings going down the street. The only thing I wonder whether is whether it, you know, the darker it gets, the bigger it gets in, in optics, basically. This is, I think, better than the previous one. I'm wondering whether it needs to get even lighter. What's that?
You like the blue better than the green?
I like this one better, I, I think because it's lighter.
Oh, I like the other one.
Go back, Steve. Steve, go back.
I don't know. I mean, I like, I just, I like military green. I think it's just in the shapility color. And to me, it brings the building down. The other one, I think the contrast of the two colors makes it appear.
This is, this has got two colors as well.
No, I know, but the, the contrast isn't as much as the other two.
Oh, yeah. Well, you're right. It, it, go back to the next one, the, the previous one. It, what it does is it accents the vertical.
This accents the vertical.
Yeah, this one, this one does.
It does. Yeah. If, yeah.
This, for some reason, the, the first color scheme looked older to me, more an older building. This building looks newer to me.
Yes, that, that would be, that would be true. Yeah.
It's interesting, isn't it? When it's exactly the same drawings, how the colors do that.
Yeah, and you got the planting in as well. So it's covering the foundation edges.
Our boy Steve, he helped us out.
You can thank the landscape architect for always calling out the right product to cover that, so.
Steve, go back to the other color.
Yep.
I like them both. I agree with Amy. I think there's something to be said for both of them.
There is, yeah. On the, on the bluish one, is there a, a tone that's a little bit, can you go back to the other one? Is there a tone that's darker than that gray, but still lighter than the, the blue?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we have, we have looked at that. The, the reason for this one with the different contrast is just so where the mansard that pulled forward, those start to pop a little bit more. You know, so that's where you're seeing the color change. There are other grays that we can get that's a little bit darker, just so the tones start to get a little bit more muted. There's not much of a distinction. So we can definitely look at that.
Or even if it just had a little bit more of a blue undertone to that gray, that's there. It doesn't have to be necessarily a darker shade, but that's a different undertone.
Yeah, yeah, we, we can look at that.
Okay. That's my two cents, Jim. I don't know what you think about that.
Well, I, I'm thinking beyond just what we're looking at because this goes all the way around the building. Don't forget, you know? So on Crescent Hill, you know, this is, this is the show end, basically, but Crescent Hill and the rest of it, basically, you know, you, you don't get a sense of the whole, the whole, basically. You just get a sense of a, a character to the front.
Yeah.
But I, you know, I, I kind of like this, but I understand where you're coming from. But I, I like something a little bit lighter because I think it, it doesn't become as dominant and it breaks it, and it breaks it, the contrast breaks it down a little bit more vertically. But I understand, you know, with the other one, the colors are so close that it, it gives you more of a horizontal along with the, with the entry canopy line running across there horizontally as well helps it that way. But again, this is, we're only looking at one face of this building at this point. So, you know, what's, what's Crescent Street, Crescent Hill look like? And, and do you mute this color out a little bit more so it, it's got more of a horizontal feel to it? I, I, I mean, I like both. I think I prefer this one. But I think in the end, you know, it's going to be the board, basically. They'll take our recommendation one way or the other, but I think in the end is, it's going to be different opinions, but I don't, I don't see anybody really objecting to either one.
The one, this is Ezra's, the one concern I would get into is you don't want to have, you know, a kind of committee debating the colors and not, not reaching a resolution. I think it probably best if the applicant presents something and the board says, can they live that or is there a problem with it?
Well, I, I, I don't know that that necessarily happens with our group. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't concern myself with that so much, but it's, it's always possible, of course, that you have that. And the whole object here is in fact to get things resolved here so that we don't spend that hour or more basically discussing tones on the building. So. Anyway.
Jim, do you think it would, and, and I'm going to, I don't, I don't know, Steve, you tell me if I'm crazy, but we go and kind of the board, should we bring the other elevations rendered in one scheme? Maybe we should. Or should we bring the two major ones? Maybe, maybe Crescent Street and Crescent Hill.
Yeah, I think we show both Crescent Hill and Crescent Street. That won't be too much more work on our end, so.
I think that way, Jim, we get, you get that corner, right? You get to see it, and you can see it on that corner.
Yeah, I also think, Pete, I think we could keep both, like, say we keep both schemes, right? The, the brown and green scheme and then this scheme. I think we could present both as a front and say, here's the two options, and then just roll with another scheme. So say we just take this one and we do the other important elevations, the topology of where we're putting what color is still going to be the same. Like this one where we're highlighting the, the mansards that are bumped out and cantilevered. This option is basically the same thing, just highlighting more of the ones sitting forward. It's going to be the same on all the other elevations, it's just more, what, what color scheme do you pick in the end to apply to those other elevations?
Peter and Steve, is that the elevator penthouse at the top?
Yes.
So I mean, that actually kind of looks like a chimney.
Yeah. The day, I guess, right? Because it's interior. The, um, we worked, something that you and I talked about, Jim, making the upper part of the mansard 42 plus inches because it acts on the right inside, it acts as the rail of that deck that's suppressed up there.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's helping us way up high, hiding HVAC and hiding some of that shaft of the elevator.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a way to make the elevator shaft look as if it is a chimney with using stone, the same stone that's on the foundation?
Well, you could, you could, you could brick, you could put the thin brick around it, apply it basically or something like that. The trouble is that is it's not, well, yeah, in some ways, but it also is, it's a box. It's not like, you know, four by one.
Right.
It's more like eight by six or something like that. So it's a big box. And it's, you know, other than looking straight on it, it might be, it might be a chimney, but once you see it in three dimensions, basically, it's a big block. So how do you conceal that big box? And what's the, you know, it might not be that high. On the other hand, it could be higher because you got to, you got to run it through the roof and you've got an override at the top of it. And then you've got to have a ventilator probably on the back side that allows the air to come and go in the shaft itself as the elevator goes up and down. So Peter, I think what I'm going to be looking for is sections, basically in detail through the windows and the roof and, and at the, at the band, the white band that runs around the building, plus the decks. And you've got probably four different window types on the roof.
Um, at least three.
Yeah. And then, and then you got, and then you got the regular windows as well. So I'd be looking for, you know, some of that cut through the building through windows, basically, but at the same time detailing up the windows or at least showing elevations of the windows in a, in a more finite way. So we know what the materials are that are being used in, in these.
Yeah.
Oh.
The same view that had the, um, the cutout balcony? Is it different on this rendering?
Yeah, they're the same. You mean, the green one to this one, they're the same?
No, the, um, the other one that we just, it might have been a different view of it, but the other, the one that you.
Oh, the balcony's.
Recession balcony, Peter.
Is that the same or is that a different view?
Different view. It's a different view. It's just where it is in the roof on the third floor. It's actually in the mansard. So we're using the roof to act as a railing. But all the balconies are indented the same amount of feet around. It's just where it's cut within the building is different.
Okay. Can you show the, um, the front elevation? Not that, the, um, the drawing, sorry.
The cat.
The black and white.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I think I was looking at the left side.
So, so the other thing I, I think, Peter, is the doorways that come out on that second floor level, first floor level, they have a canopy over them.
Yeah.
Like to see what that is all about, too.
Okay, yeah.
And the railings at the balconies and the, whatever you're doing basically along the porch line as well.
Okay.
What was the first thing you said, Jim?
Um, the doorways, the, the drawing you're looking at, there are several doorways with little canopies over them.
Okay.
They're in the middle of the building.
Yeah.
You know, the detailing for that. I'm assuming it's a canopy with brackets. At least that's what it looks like.
That's the side, right?
Those get, those are entries to the, to spaces.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then what is the material that, you know, the whole thing on materials, basically, from which should be presented, basically, at this next meeting, as to the roof and the siding. And so the stuff I'm asking for is really part of that package, basically, of the typical detail and siding or finished materials, basically, on the outside of the building.
Sure.
Can we get those down at the building inspector's office yet, or is it too early for that?
No, we, we don't have anything.
Okay.
But, you know, we need to get a booklet made up of some of this stuff like we do as well, plus stuff like you say, down the building department's office to have a board down there. Well, I'm glad to see all the pieces are fitting anyway.
Peter, so you want to talk about materials?
So, 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 I mean, we started to, we're showing this building with Hardy plank. You've got some stone on that foundation, which we will specify the particular color and type. It, all of the building from the stone up right now is drawn with Hardy plank. That's what, that's what that is. And, and we went into their website and picked colors that they offered.
And they, and this is, that's normally the material the board accepts. I don't think they're going to accept anything else unless you got something else that, some other material that will stand up that will stand up in a long run of time and doesn't need a lot of maintenance.
And then I, and then we'll, we can, we'll provide, um, a look at what that band is. You know, the crown, the, the AZAC, what that's made out of. Also, we did, we did actually pick that bracket that's drawn small here, but we have it in pipe on. It's an actual product that can be bought. We can get one as we move forward to, to show you and to put in the building department if you want. But we can, we can show you that.
Peter, how do you do the curve on the mansard roof like that?
Well, I, I did some research on that and Jim and I have actually talked about it, but you can take, one, one simple way is to take a two by twelve and actually cut it, cut the curve into it as it comes down and meets the overhead. Uh, and then, and then the wall of the unit inside is actually vertical. So the, so the wall, if you're inside that apartment, your wall is straight. The mansard, um, rafter is cut beyond that and then comes down and, and meets the overhang, which is just shy of a couple of feet, uh, on those areas where it meets the building. So we looked at that and even though you're seeing it flat, we looked, we looked at it in section already, which I think we can share, Jim, if you want.
Yeah.
At the zoning board will zone in on it and show you how it cuts and how the rafter meets, uh, the wall and the roof.
There, there is also, Brian, there is, if you were using steel studs, there are companies out there that actually pre-bend them. Um, they have machines that basically will pre-bend if you were, if you were to use steel studding type of system.
I mean, that's a nice touch on the building.
Yeah, it's a nice feature. I like it.
Yeah. I mean, I gotta tell you, I, I've been involved in a lot of forty B, uh, a number of forty Bs in, in other towns and I haven't seen a building like this in a forty B. So.
All right, so this looks very good, very good. So Peter, if you want to send me, um, the, well, send me this stuff and I'll print up one of the elevations and, or several elevations basically, and you mark up where I want to see. But I think you probably understand where I'm going to be looking.
I believe you do.
Based on past experience.
Exactly. No problem. We, we'll, we'll send you a PDF. We can send it to you, Amy, as well.
Okay.
And we can go, and that'll be a, a record of what we looked at tonight.
Yep. So Amy.
Yes.
Comments beyond what you already commented on?
Yeah, no, I think it's, it's nice to see it coming together. Um, I, like I said, I like the colors on both of them, so I think whatever we end up with would be fine with me. Um, I like the touches, like Brian said, this isn't your typical forty B project. I know this has been hard with us and been very, um, adaptive to what we've been saying. So it's nice to see these, you know, just the little details under the mansard, those brackets that are there, they have a name on it, but you know, the double brackets and I just, I think it's, it's, all the detail is really nice.
Brian?
Yes.
Um, you had a, you had a roof plan at one time. You still have it updated?
Well, that's a question for Peter.
Either, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah. We, we, we can, um, re-do the roof plan so that we have it updated.
Yeah, because the board's going to want to know where the units are and there'll be some conversation about, like you say, the parapet basically, so it hides a lot of stuff.
How about, how about vents coming out the side of the building? You get a vent for the roof, Peter?
Well.
You, you're talking about stoppers and.
Well, dryer vents because the board, you know, Jim, the board's going to ask.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because you're showing a clean, you're showing a clean facade here.
Yeah.
And, you know, so what are you going to do for venting from the units in the front and, and on the sides?
Yeah, dryers and bathrooms basically is what you're talking about. The other thing would be lighting, you know, what's at the canopy and what else is on, near the garage doors or something like that? Any, any sort of, um, face mounted lighting that might, uh, go on this building? I doubt whether there's much, but there is some.
There is some. I was thinking underneath all of this porch, we would have all recessed lighting, right? So a little low blow. But yes.
What do you do with the garage entries?
Yeah, we've got to do something there for sure.
And the doorways on the outside.
And the door, then under those, um, canopies, we can show lighting, which I think would be a great way to do that. But look at the doors, that's, that's a very good point.
Yeah.
Well, the garage shows, uh, motion lighting, but you can't see the, the lighting from the garage and outside, right?
Well, we didn't talk about that. I mean, in this, at this level, though, a lot of these windows are into the garage, right? What we're looking at here. Um, we probably want to shield them with something inside, some kind of a screen or something. So the, I don't think we've got to have light come through, but maybe we don't want to have full view through there.
Right.
Peter, what are you doing for the venting in the garage, garage levels?
There's got to be full mechanical venting.
I don't know what that's going to be yet.
I don't, but I, I would hope we could do it right and left.
Well, you got, you got an intake and an exhaust system in the garage, garages. So there's going to be some louvers or something like that for those activities.
Yeah.
So that's, and none of this shows any of that at the moment.
Yeah.
I suppose it could be along the garden back edge of the, the right-hand side of the garden. It could be some sort of area way that allows air in or air out or something like that. Although I'd hate to sort of disturb some of the planting, but it might be, there might be some constructive spaces for that.
Yeah.
So most of my list basically is covered to this point.
Can I, I, this is Ezra. I, um, I'm going to need to go as I, as I mentioned, but, um, I just wanted to jump in and follow up a little bit on, on Brian's point about listing some of the conditions. Um, I think that's a, a granted, David was talking about that as well, you know, wanting to sort of move towards that, you know, the materials and, and all this, this review is, is key, but, but so it's just making sure that all the things that have been raised in the, in the public hearing and promised to, or agreed to, to the extent possible, most of those should be represented on the plans, you know? So ideally we want the final plan set to just show the stuff so that it doesn't even have to be a condition that someone has to track down. Um, and then secondly, everything mentioned in the peer review, Brian. Um, you know, but then the third piece would be anything else you're agreeing to that, you know, you'd said in the meetings about, you know, we'll, we'll contribute this or run that or, um, and that'd be, you know, the, the earlier you can get that to, to the board so that I can review it, they can review it and, and all that, the better. So thanks.
Yeah, I'll put, I could put a preliminary list together, Ezra, and I'm sure we'll add to it, but, um,
Yeah.
But just to get.
And really.
Thinking in that.
And to the extent there are things that are, that are in those peer review memos, you know, it's, it's best just to parrot that language rather than, you know, if we get out of sync with it, then we'll have those ones and something else and it's going to be confusing. But so, so if it's covered in a peer review memo, let's keep that language is what I would recommend.
And, and you're correct in some ways that some, some of that needs to go onto the drawings, uh, particularly that then gets exported into the construction drawings in the future if it gets passed.
Exactly.
And the contractor then understands what he has to do. On the other hand, the legal part of it in the form of the conditions, the right written part is handled, is basically in the response, in the responsibility of the, of the owner in managing the building has nothing to do with the construction of the building. So we have run into issues basically where the contractor or super basically doesn't understand some of the agreements because they weren't on the drawing, but they're in another piece of paper that of course he's, doesn't have anything to do with generally. Cause he's just building from what the drawing shows. So, um, it, we have run into this, we're aware of it, but it's a good reminder that we do it in that sort of split form.
Yeah, because some of the stuff, you know, is not conducive to be on, on the plan.
Right.
Condition.
Right, certainly stuff about how the delivery space will work or.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Snow plowing, yeah.
The commitment to the visitor parking spaces, the intercom system and.
Exactly. All that stuff that was represented and just, you want to have it in there somewhere, so.
Yeah, usually a lot of that stuff.
But, but anything this, this committee's been discussing really can, a lot of this stuff can really get under that final plan set, which is great because that's the cleanest way.
Yeah.
You know, spec out those birds, spec out the birds that are showing up there over the, over the roof. Make sure we get those ones.
I was wondering what those were. I was scratching my computer, thinking something was on the screen.
So Jim, do you, uh, do you want, so Peter, when do you think you can have this stuff that Jim wants? Um, I mean, the board meets next Wednesday. You know, um, you know, I, I'm wondering, do you, do you guys want to do a, try to do another, could you have some?
I, I highly recommend another session before going to the board.
Yeah, I do too. Yeah, so.
I think we need to get all the bits and pieces, the rest of the bits and pieces together basically, and make sure that it's, it's, uh, what we think it is. And, uh, Amy and I come to agreement to make a recommendation on that, on those bits and pieces basically. Um, so there is no stone that hasn't been unturned or question that is going to be asked of us when in fact we haven't covered it or hadn't thought to cover it. So, um, I would look forward to another session.
I have two more questions too, actually. Um, one, is that sign the only sign that's going to be there so far?
Oh, my, yes.
Okay. Um, and what's the material of that? It looks like a stone.
I, I don't, good question. I don't think we, we thought that far into it yet, but.
Stone would be kind of cool, in my opinion, but, um, and then do we have an image at all that shows the current houses that are there now, the setback of them, and then with this kind of overlayed on top of it to see, does it line up exactly where the houses are now, as close to the street? Is it setback further, closer?
That's a site plan, um, but you're saying, so we bring, I, I thought we did have that at one time.
I don't, I don't, when I, I keep driving by it every day and I just want to, I'm trying to get a visual of where it's going to be.
Okay.
It's, I think it's closer to the street, particularly if you look at the landscape, the bedding at the front where the doorway is and the, in the, in the patio area. It's, that's, uh, not far back from the edge of the sidewalk.
Yeah, it's close to the street.
It is, okay. Do you know by how much I can or is that something you can get?
I don't, but we can look at the site plans and get that out.
Thank you. Just, I know that the houses are, are close, so I'm just wondering how much closer this is going to come out.
Yeah.
So Jim, are you saying, do you want to try to do another meeting before Wednesday or do you not want us to go Wednesday? What do you, what do you, and I want.
I'm, I'm thinking you don't go Wednesday. I, I, you know, that's my, it's, it, you go, then you go in December.
Well, I'm fi, I'm fine with that. I, I just want Ezra's thoughts on that. He's our, uh, you know, consultant here, so. Um. Is Ezra, is Ezra still on?
I think he said he had to go.
We had to take off.
I think Brian, the issue would, isn't, isn't, I would be saying that we would need all of the information done by Friday.
Yep. Well, I think you could submit, you could submit this and then, you know, potentially we could do a subcommittee meeting on Tuesday and then, and then, and then, you know, present an updated version of what was submitted Friday to the board on Wednesday if we were ready. Uh, the only thing I'm saying, Jim, is, and, and again, I've said it before, we're happy to work with the board on time, but right now you're, you know, we've got two meetings because you've only got one in November and then one in December.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, they might want to start talking about some of the conditions, um, you know, just have a general discussion on them and maybe, maybe show them this and say, look, here's where we are. We're still working on some details, but this is.
I mean, I'm, I'm perfectly fine. I mean, and, you know, I'd like to see the elements that I haven't identified fully at this point. And if there's, you know, if there's another meeting like on Tuesday of next week, I'm fine with attending that and seemingly, um, I've been sent some of that material so I can look it over ahead of time.
Peter, is Tuesday enough time for you to deal with some of this stuff or no? I mean, you know, we, we, we need to be real.
I don't, I don't, I think we've got a fair amount. I think it's aggressive because of just all the pieces, parts we need to get together, right? Um, I'm thinking of all the venting, all the, the roof plan, there's, there's a lot there to, to accumulate uh, the venting of the, of the garage. It, I, it requires me reaching out to, I would feel good if I reached out to Larry Roy as an example and say, what, what, what do you recommend we use there and how big would it be? And then I can start to integrate it.
Yeah.
So this time, right, back and forth.
I think the other, the other thing is next week's, next week's meeting is going to be a shock full agenda. Lots of stuff on the schedule. It's going to be, it's going to be one of those one o'clock nights.
Do you think, um, Amy and Jim, that the board might entertain doing a special meeting for this?
We've done it before.
I mean, especially with how busy your agenda is that.
We don't want to add this on to an already busy meeting because this isn't, this is a, a discussion that is going to happen.
Yeah.
I mean, I, Jim, what do you think? I don't think that it would be an issue.
I mean, you know, as an example, potentially, you know, uh, December first, um, you know, because that, you know, because you meet on the seventeenth and then you're not going to meet the week of Thanksgiving the next week, but then the week after that would be December firth, that, you know, the Wednesday will be December one.
Well, it's a little bit easier to do it in a zone manner, basically. People don't have to move or change much basically, so you know, um, if, if you want to give that a shot, fine. Um, I'm not sure, you know, and like Amy says, we've done it a few times. And if, if given, given, um, given the schedule for Wednesday, Bob, the, the board may welcome it, you know, to free up the schedule.
I, I mean, I think what I'm hearing from you, Jim, is you really, since you haven't had a chance to, um, kind of look at the, um, cross-sections and stuff, you're not really comfortable with this being presented yet.
If, if it was presented as it is for the moment, I think it's going to ask, there are going to be one, questions of me, all right?
Yeah.
Two, they're going to want to see what I want to see, which is, you know, what's, what does, uh, Crescent Hill look like? That side, you know? How does that fit into the, how does that fit into the neighborhood? And we've got, you know, one elevation basically here, uh, that's all colored up. So, um, and if you, you know, just wanted to do a quick, say, you know, here's where we're at and, but can we concentrate on the conditions? Um, you know, and, and so just give it a, a report as to status. And then, uh, and then sort of concentrate on conditions, but it seems to me it's, it's a little too piecemeal for me.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, why don't we do that? Because I think that she is, you know, I don't, I, I don't think he's not going to want to do anything at that meeting. That's my guess.
Right.
You know.
I suspect you're right.
Yeah, so, so I mean, I can put together some, you know, conditions and submit those for, you know, for discussion and perhaps we can update them where we are on the, on the elevations. Um, but your, your suggestion would be not to submit this at this point. You're looking at this as still a working model before your subcommittee not ready to go to the full board yet.
Right, right. And now if you can, if you, if you can get a separate meeting on this project to close it or get close to closing and get a vote on it, then I would say, yeah, try that, you know?
So why don't we, why don't we put it on going?
I have no idea what's coming in December at this point, except for, you know, the gas station on four corners up here and a, and a few other things. And who knows what's going to hang off, hang on the next project basically. Is, is Water Street going to go to this next meeting or is that going to be postponed too?
I think.
Ninety-seven?
Yeah, I think it's going.
Okay.
But I got to talk to the client. I mean, I mean, he was reaching out to the neighbors and trying, you know, he, he had gone away for, he was in Europe for a week, so he visited a family in Italy, so, um, I don't know where he is. I got to find that out tomorrow.
Well, I, I saw a set of plans running around, so.
Yeah, I don't think the gas station's going forward either.
Okay.
But, 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 you know, I, I hear what you're saying. I don't want to present something that you and Amy aren't like, you know, you've had a chance to see everything and so, so maybe we do that. We don't present this architectural stuff, but I'll put together some, some model type conditions um, for discussion with the board. So then we can, then it will lead to me being able to draft, you know, conditions and an operation and maintenance plan, which they kind of want as far as operation of garage, visitor parking, all that stuff.
Yeah, and there's been a lot, there has been a lot of discussion basically of, of what's in this project. So hopefully we can go through that list and make sure it's full.
Yeah.
Brian, do you think that talking about discussion, um, conditions right now, though, it's putting the cart before the horse?
Um, they wanted them. I mean, you know, Dave wanted those, Amy.
Okay. I just would hate to see all that work done and then when we show them what, you know, this stuff and they say, no.
No, I think they want, I mean, my, my, my recollection is they wanted, they wanted the conditions. Um, and, and that's what Ezra had just said before he left, that he thought that we should. Stop putting that together.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I think, I think you're right on that, Brian, that, that, you know, we can run parallel paths. We don't have to. Basically wait for one thing after another because.
I'm not looking for them to commit. I'm not looking for a commitment, Amy, on the conditions, but I just want to stop putting them together because a lot has been promised and discussed. And I don't want to miss them. So I, I, I'd like to put a, what I'll call a preliminary list together and I'm sure, you know. Um, somebody's going to say, oh, you forgot this, you forgot that, you forgot this and, you know.
Running lists like a trap.
Yeah, but exactly. But instead of like waiting till like the last meeting and say, here's the conditions and then, and then forget something.
Okay. That makes sense.
Okay. We're all done here.
Yeah, um. I think I'm, I'm good.
All right, Amy.
I'm on set.
All right. So, um. I vote to close, Amy.
So Jim, just before you do, so.
Yeah.
We, um, so we're going to go Wednesday, some condition stuff. We want, I will not submit these drawings, um. And we'll talk to the board about the possibility of a special meeting if they, if they want to entertain it. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
You ready to close, Amy?
I'm ready.
Okay. So it's, um, five fifty-three and we are closing this subcommittee meeting with the zoning board. On, um, four, four forty-four, forty-four, forty-six, four forty-eight Crescent Street project. And, uh, we will be filing this in the next month or so. Um, and Peter, you'll get me what I need.
Yes, go, I'll, we'll get you, uh, yeah, no problem.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you all.